All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisc Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Hi, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 17th, 2018. It is 11:34 a.m., and we are at the central office conference room at 195 Federal Street, Suite 100. And this is a special meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. Can we have a roll call, please?
Committee Member Karen.
Yes.
Committee Member Extrum.
Present.
Committee Member Hollins.
Present.
Committee Member Ward, I reflect as absent. Mayor Martin, I reflect as absent. Committee Member Nunez.
Here.
And myself. Chair Nunez, you have quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we will go straight into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specific to the superintendent contract for Jordana Harper. Do you have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Committee Member Nunez.
Yes.
Committee Member Hollins.
Yes.
Committee Member Extrum.
Yes.
Committee Member Karen.
Yes.
You have Nunez's executive session at 11:35.
Hi, everyone.
Should the door be open?
Yes, thank you.
Will it close?
No, it should be open.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Mayor Martin has joined us. We're back from executive session. The superintendent, of course, has joined us. And we are moving right on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the anticipated public vote on the superintendent contract for Jordana Harper. Is there a motion to get this started? Katie? Are you there, Katie?
So I make a motion that we... Wait, I gotta make the motion first. I make a motion that we conduct a public vote on the superintendent contract. Katie?
Okay. So, I'll make a suggestion for wording.
All right.
Move to accept the final draft of the superintendent contract as presented on July 17th for the term of July 1, 2018, to June 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Great. Is there a second?
I forgot I was supposed to...
Katie, is that a second?
I can't hear you, you're breaking up again, hold on.
Second.
Second by Mayor Martin. Thank you so much. Okay. So, is there any discussion? Any discussion at all? Okay. Seeing no discussion, there is, I'll just say quickly, just a quick thanks to everyone, all the members, as well as the superintendent, for, you know, the extended conversation that we've had related to this contract negotiation. I think that the conversation has been quite good and necessary, and I just have a lot of appreciation for everyone putting in extra time in order to attend the meetings, and take the time on both sides to really thoroughly review everything in the contract. So with a motion on the table, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mayor Martin's in favor. And Member Hollins?
abstained.
Member Hollins abstained. So, motion carries. We have a new superintendent contract for the year.
Same superintendent.
Same superintendent, new contract. We'll get that signed. And...
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Very excited. Happy for another three years. Superintendent Harper, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a request for change to the date of the superintendent evaluation. We have coming up, we had discussed a change in the date to be for July 25th, I believe. This is for this past school year superintendent evaluation. And this request just came forward from the superintendent to have a couple of extra...
Excuse the interruption. Peter Jimm, direct department is headed over in about 15 minutes. If one of you could open the door on Sanderson for them, that'd be great. Again, the direct department will be here in about 15 minutes, and will need to have access to the Sanderson Street entrance. Thank you.
So the superintendent is requesting an additional two or three weeks to prepare superintendent evaluation materials, et cetera, and for the final date of the superintendent evaluation for FY '18. Can we start with a motion on this to start discussion? Anyone want to...
Explain that again and relate it to the contract that we just agreed to?
So, the superintendent is requesting for an additional two to three weeks to have the FY '18 superintendent evaluation. It was, it is currently scheduled for July 25th. And the superintendent is requesting an additional couple of weeks. And this request came forward just recently, and... Yeah, the rationale is that, I mean, I don't want to speak necessarily for the superintendent. Did you want to speak publicly?
Do I need to make a motion first?
Um, I, it would be helpful to have a motion, yeah.
So, I make a motion to agree to the change of date for the superintendent's evaluation materials for review by the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Susan Extrum, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, there's been a number of things going on. We are actually starting, we're moving forward with discussing the consecutive evaluation. And given the timing with hiring a director of people services, or looking, doing a people services search, director of people services search, and doing the business administrator search, I think it is more than reason to allow for extra time.
Okay. Don, did you want to comment on your second?
No, I will, I support that notion that we do need to make sure this is a professional process, and taking the extra time is well worth it being done correctly. And with all the thing that's been going on, it feels like we're at that point where we can actually do this with the courtesy and professionalism necessary. So I support this.
I can't hear you, I'm here. You're whispering?
Yes, I am whispering. I support it. We've been busy in the past, we need to do this in a professional manner, and I think by taking this extra, by accepting this step, then we will be able to move, continue moving forward in...
Mayor.
So I can't support this motion. I need it to be specifically related to the contract we just voted on, and so that for each, each extension that's required, it should be in writing because of contractual ramifications, we're not doing everything on our timeline in the contract. So, we have three important dates, June 1st. Are we saying that date doesn't matter at all anymore if we're doing FY '18? Because we're in FY '19, and for FY '18, we'll have to have it done before June 1st. For September 30th, I think it's, we have to have a mutually agreed goal. We need mutually agreed goals, so for September 30th, FY '18 was last year, and September 30th this year is FY '19, so if we're gonna do FY '18 through September 30th for a mutually agreed goals for the superintendent, we're gonna miss 2019. So, we should, we should have something specific. If we have a written request from the superintendent's lawyer, then that would be very helpful. And if the superintendent wants to expand on, why the necessary time is critical, I don't really have an objection to two weeks or so, but there's nothing different this July and August than every July and August, people leaving, people coming. I mean, this, I think we've yet to have a coordinated, scheduled, educated superintendent evaluation since the law came out.
Mayor Martin, Member Hollins?
Well... One of my thoughts is that there was a time when we were trying to amend the school committee agenda, and, and it was all this concern that we made sure even with the amended agenda, that the new items coming on, there was gonna be 48 hours. So, I don't want us to get in a practice of, you know, 24 hours, the agenda's changing. I would have rather have been brought up under new information, so that we can consistently follow the guidelines for agenda. And, you know, in a way, I don't care, except it is FY '19. I mean, it's not that I don't care, but it's not an unreasonable request, but it's FY '19. I want us to be thinking about next year, and I went back and I looked at our minutes, and we voted goals in February, and I made the motion that we would have, you know, really fewer goals, I think only two goals, and the motion was, the discussion, what's in the minutes, is that we could complete this by June. So, my feeling is, one way or the other, it's okay, but I want us to be talking about what are our goals for next year, and I feel like we're dragging the last year forward. One of the goals, we know, was implemented. So in a way, I, I don't want us to lose focus on having goals for next year.
Mayor Exchard.
I just want to reiterate that, that the Personnel Subcommittee is actually moving forward with goals for next year. I mean, we're, we're at the point where we're getting ready to lay those out in, you know, for everyone. If there is something from the past evaluation that seems like it needs more work, can absolutely be added just for the next, for the next year. I think, I don't think that not having this year's evaluation completed should hinder us from going forward with next year's evaluation goals. So, I guess saying that is, I see them as two, two separate things. I understand that we need to be looking forward, but we also have to look back and make sure that what was, what we asked was done or not done, or whatever it is that we're going to make the final decision on. But I think that they're two separate things.
Don, person?
The superintendent goal, or evaluation that we're working on, is work that is behind schedule right now, if we did it in a perfect world. And because of certain things came up that prohibited us to move forward on this, we need to finish this. And as part of personnel, goals are separate. Goals are very well tied. These goals that are on this evaluation were voted and already in place. So, working on the next goals will be next year's evaluation, that's kind of a separate thing. Other positive light is, is that the Personnel Subcommittee is working closely with a special subcommittee to ensure that we're getting everything possible for the next set of goals, which will be coming out in September. That's the, that's the mission goal, to finish and have these ready to go in time on target.
Yes, no one else?
Just a question, does extending change the time period that's covered in the evaluation? Is it the same time period up to...
I would imagine so.
It doesn't, it does not change the time period being covered?
I mean, I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine that I would include whatever, you know, the end of FY '18. Does that, you understand this?
Does the superintendent have any clarifications, anything to say?
I have requested from the chair that this conversation take place in executive session because it is very much related to the contract negotiations that were previously discussed in the executive session. Because I was not in executive session and not privy to that discussion that took place today, I am not prepared to comment on this. This was referred through council, from my council to school committee's council, so I'm not prepared to comment on this in open session. The reason is directly related to the length of time that it took to focus on contract negotiations, and for no other reason. I would like to comment on the dates. The June deadline that's in my contract for evaluation by the school committee, by all accounts, has passed. Whether the evaluation occurs now, or three weeks from now, or six weeks from now, the deadline has passed. The date for setting goals for next year is September 30th. By all accounts, that has not yet happened, and it's, there's plenty of time for that to happen. So, as we're sitting here today, we're just, I think, looking for clarification about when the evaluation documents are into the committee and when that takes place. And I would expect that with a new contract in place, we'd be in a good position for this to be on track for FY '19.
Mayor Martin?
So, I wasn't aware this was executive session, you know, discussion. Certainly it's not, we're in open session. So, if there was a legal request from the superintendent's attorney to not discuss this in open session, then we should probably comply. On the other hand, we have a contract we've agreed to, so that we also have to comply with that contract. So I would say that the chair and the chair of the Personnel Committee should come up with a legal date as to which, which process we're gonna follow, on the existing contract for FY '19, or a tardy response to the FY '18 evaluation. I think that's what the superintendent's...
Okay. I have several items to comment on. The first is Member Hollins' comment related to the 48-hour open meeting law. I did review with our attorney related to that, and it is well within our right to bring new business that comes within the 48 hours to the table if need be. And so, I did, with consult with him, bring it to the table. The discussion of the superintendent's evaluation date is an open session discussion. It was not explicitly requested from me through, either through council, to have an executive session discussion about this. And I did also speak briefly with him about the predicament that this is essentially a public discussion item, because it's the superintendent evaluation date. And the reason why it was expeditiously brought to the table is because we have previously in the full committee, agreed to an extension of the superintendent evaluation for FY '18, to hold that evaluation on September 25th, and the packet was to be given to the full committee about a week ago, I believe, Sep-, uh, August, excuse me. July 25th was the date that we decided, and it was, the packet was to be given to us about a week ago. So, we also had agreed formally to extend that date outside of the contract terms that were, that we were bound to in the superintendent's former contract. So yes, we have had extensive conversation about that. And my understanding is that this particular evaluation, since it is through FY '18, would be looking at the former contracts, and we are already outside of those bounds, and we have all, including the superintendent, mutually agreed to that. This is the second time a request for extension has come forward. So, at this time, I feel that if we prefer to continue the conversation in executive session, we could. I know that our attorney is available by phone, if we need to call him, we can call him. I, my understanding of this is that this is in a public session conversation about when the superintendent's evaluation is to be. I was told that the date of this, this, this discussion itself was not... Although the request came through the attorneys, it was not specific to the contract. I spoke briefly with the superintendent just prior to this meeting, and here we are.
Thank you for the clarification.
And in terms of extending the superintendent evaluation, I am comfortable with extending the evaluation to, you know, two or three weeks from now. I think that we need to just get it done now. I am looking forward to the new year, and, you know, new contract, moving into a new phase, I think we all are, and keeping ourselves on schedule with agreed-upon contract terms related to evaluation. And it seems like we all are ready to do that. So I like the idea of us wrapping up this school year, but doing so in a professional, respectful, and compassionate way, which is really that there have been a lot of additional items that have come to the district and to the superintendent's table, including resignation of the director of people services, and extended contract negotiation. So, I'm willing to support this motion to extend the contract, um, excuse me, pardon me, to extend, to change the date of the superintendent evaluation. So, yes, Mayor Martin?
Yes. So I understand that we're going to extend the time to evaluate the last year's discontinued date. So, we had to report by June 1st. It has no bearing, because I see nothing in writing requesting otherwise, no bearing on the evaluation. So once the evaluation is done, between now and, what do you think, the middle of August?
When would the evaluation be done? Is that what you're asking? My understanding is that the superintendent is requesting two, an additional two to three weeks. Is that correct? So if we had previously set the date to July 25th, then we can say when it happens, and yes, I think that it would be at the beginning of August.
Well, two weeks would be the first week in August. Three weeks would be the second week in August, which would be in line with our regular school committee, second Wednesday meeting. So if that's to occur, then we have a lot of work to do between now and that vote that evening, or that discussion. And that's on that plate. On this plate is the new contract. The new contract says by September 30th, the school committee and superintendent will devise and design performance measures and goals for next year's evaluation that will occur before June 1st, 2019. So, we have 10 weeks to do that. I would just suggest to the chair that, you know, there has to be some time restrictions on some of these projects, so we can get them done according to the contract. Otherwise, we'd be in a position where someone would request an extension.
So yeah, if you have to go?
I do, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Susan.
Thanks so much.
Okay. There is a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on the motion to extend? Pardon?
I was just making sure there's a record.
Yeah. Katie, you're still there, right?
I am here, yes. I am totally in support of extending this motion. So many things have come to our table in the past six months that were completely unpredictable. I don't think that we would like someone to complete an evaluation, that they feel pressured to do so quickly in a period of time. It's not gonna give them their full focus and a well-thought-out process for us or them. I don't think this is an unfair request. We were six months or so late in setting our goals with the hearts of the superintendent herself. I don't think we're, you should expect that she should be perfectly on time, what we couldn't do it ourselves.
Thank you, Member Karen. Any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Could we provide a friendly amendment to do a date specific for the evaluation?
I think that's a great idea. Do you have a suggested date, Mayor Martin?
Second Tu-, second Wednesday in August?
At our regular...
Which gives the superintendent the maximum amount of time she requested, and this fits in with our regularly scheduled meeting.
So to have it at our regularly scheduled meeting? Okay. I... It was your motion, right?
Yes.
You said that...
Yes.
Okay.
My one concern is, we have a pretty heavy docket in August, yes?
We do have a heavy docket in August.
We do have a big meeting. We will have three...
And this need to be, we need to focus strictly on the evaluation, when we do sit down, so that's a concern.
I think that no matter what, we're looking at, you know, a lot of meeting time. Whether we put it all in to that meeting, or another meeting, I'm not sure what to do necessarily. I'm open to, it's not my first priority, or I'm sorry, it's not my first option in adding it on to the regular August agenda, simply because I think that we have a pretty big meeting anyway. However, I could, I could get behind it. Yes.
We'd like to offer a friendly amendment, onto the friendly amendment, that we actually look at maybe the 16th, the day after, which, yes, it's gonna make a hard week for us all, and we will be able to clear our heads in between the two meetings.
That's actually the following week. The second Wednesday is August 8th. We have the 3rd.
We've got 15th, I'm gonna go. Then let's go with, like, the 16th, that gives us time in between. It's still roughly halfway through the month. It will give us, right now, from today, the 30th for the superintendent to get her materials to us. It will give the, each school committee member roughly a week to do their individuals, and it will still give committee member Extrum plenty of time to collate and put together the final document. We can still tweak the dates, but I'm just, follow the same template, and everybody gets thorough time to spend with us.
I have a conflict on the 16th in the evening, but that week is fine. I'm generally flexible as long as we can coordinate.
What about the 14th?
I'm free the 13th, 15th, and 17th.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
What about the 13th for everybody?
13th sounds good to me.
That's fine with me. Can we schedule it in the morning? Like, first thing, so we can just get this done?
I think we can take a poll.
If you're scheduling during the daytime, the 16th is fine.
Okay.
We can coordinate by email too, if you prefer.
We can. So do we want to agree on... We can. So do we want to agree on the week of the 13th?
Sure.
Yep.
Mayor Martin, does that refer to this different than what you put forward?
You have counsel the 15th.
That would work for you. Sometime during the week of the 13th, we can.
But not the 15th.
But not the 15th, in the morning?
Excuse me, I cannot make the week of the 13th. It doesn't matter until the court, but I will not meet it.
Okay, thank you.
We could do that, the week of the 13th. The longer we put this off, the shorter the amount of time we have to come to a mutually agreed goals with the superintendent. We've been unable to do that over the long period of time in the past. So by the middle of August, we have six weeks. It's going to take 10 weeks now.
We'll have already started on it by then.
Next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're starting next goal, next week.
Yeah, they're not getting held for this.
Yeah, that process is already, you know, already going on.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so just to reiterate. Are, so the motion changed slightly to?
I withdraw my motion, looking for the more specific one on the table.
Well, the motion came from Susan. Do you want to withdraw and put forward a motion for the week of the 13th?
Sure, what would be some nice words to put on that?
Just say that.
I'd like, I make a motion that we receive the superintendent's evaluation materials the week of August 13 and...
No, no, schedule the evaluation for the week of the 13th.
The final evaluation for the week of 13th.
So we, I make a motion that we do a final evaluation the week of August 13.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Superintendent, does that feel good to you?
I'm eager to also move forward and focus on next year, so I believe this is reasonable.
So what's our timeline of all the steps then?
I believe packets to the committee by the 30th, is that?
I think we had it one week before, didn't we?
The 23rd?
We had previously done like three weeks, one week to review and get it back to Susan Ekstrom who was going to compile it. Right? I don't know. Don, you know better.
Okay, the way it's looking right now, Susan, our committee member Ekstrom would probably need the week of the 6th to compile and get it back in so it can be ready for the special meeting, depending on when the week of the 13th, when during that week we actually have the evaluation. One week for a sec, for all committee members to have the material and make their comments would have to be probably the week of the 30th of Ju, July through the first, 4th, 3rd or the 3rd of August. That means we would need to have something from the superintendent. But there you go. Does that sound right?
The request was for three additional weeks of time from the day the contract is finalized to put the materials together, so I...
So that means packets come to me on the 6th. I do the compilation for presentation to everyone by the, that third week of August, yes?
And then we're looking at evaluation on the week of the 20th? Is that what we're talking, is that what we're saying?
I should have everything done by the 10th or
Okay.
11th, 12th, by whatever date we decide we're going to meet.
Okay, can you repeat, packets by the 6th?
Packets to the committee by the 30th.
But we just heard from the superintendent that she is asking for more time. Right? Am I hearing this correctly?
Did you say the 30th was reasonable or no?
I just, I'd like to reiterate that my request was for this to be an executive session discussion and the reason being that while the superintendent's evaluation is absolutely public, the reason for it is related to contractual negotiations. I just want to reiterate that as my effort to try to do this, working cooperatively with the committee and expeditiously, but also fair to the workload that's going on. The request was for three additional weeks from a successful negotiation and so that means that we would be looking at...
Three additional weeks for your materials to arrive?
Just to prepare the documentation of the work that's already occurred.
Just want to make sure that I'm following.
Which is comprehensive.
So that would be like the 7th?
So that would be her material ready for the 7th of August.
Yeah, that's three weeks from now.
Okay, and then school committee members will have their materials in to committee member Ekstrom 14th.
Okay.
Will that still meet the projected date of the 16th?
I mean, that works if the, if Susan...
So if they, they're going to get, they're going to stuff to me by the 14th and then I've got the 15th to compile everything, is what we're saying?
Yeah.
So Susan, I get things to you on the 6th. You turn them around to the committee on the 9th and then they go back to the full committee on the 16th, is that correct?
If you got them to me. If you got them to the committee on the 6th.
I'll get them to you on the 3rd, how about that?
So the committee gets everything on the 3rd. They finish with their whatever, whatever by the 9th. How's that, Thursday, the 9th? And then I will have everything ready for the 16th.
And then, so the 16th, early in the day, we're saying is basically unmediated?
You get it to the members by what day?
The 3rd. Until Friday.
You're receiving it from the superintendent on the 3rd, right?
Everyone, yes.
If everyone receives it from the superintendent on the 3rd. And then we all do our magic until the 9th. And then I have from the 10th to the 16th. Do I have to, do we have to do anything on the agenda to make sure that we're doing this? Like, do I have to something, do I have to do anything to make sure it makes the agenda? I guess it's my point.
We're going to have a special meeting on the 16th sometime on the 16th for the evaluation. And you're asking if your compilation needs to be available 48 hours in advance of the 16th and the answer is yes. So that would be?
It means 14th, really?
The 14th, 48 hours prior to the 16th, whatever time you schedule the meeting.
My work has to be done.
Yeah.
And returned to whom? You?
Yeah, and sent out to the full committee.
I just, that's fine. I just want to make sure that I'm following everything properly.
And we still have the meeting on the 8th?
Yes.
Yes.
A regular meeting.
Which means that my documents to the committee, gosh, that's hard. The 3rd is the date that all the regular committee documents are into.
So, let's also be clear then, if I don't have someone's stuff by the 9th, bummer for them.
It doesn't make it. That's been clear from the very beginning. If you don't get their documents to you or you don't have it, it doesn't really, keep going.
So I was trying to compromise from the 6th to the 3rd, does it work if I turn in documents on the 6th or it doesn't? Because of the deadline for the committee documents on the 3rd for a regular meeting? Because I have to submit those documents to the committee as well that date.
The 6th works for me. I don't think we need that much time to turn it around.
Then it has to be, so then everyone has to do their work by the 9th? And we have a committee meeting on the 8th? Which
Okay, either way.
Is, is fine, I'm just putting, I'm just.
Either way.
If we get it, if you get it to us by the 3rd, then people have it over the weekend, which I don't care one way or the other, but it's on May.
I'll just send in regular documents probably on the 6th, that's fine.
As long as I can start my gig on the 10th, then we can make it on the 14th.
Okay. Okay, so I don't really know where we're with the motion. I believe that Susan Ekstrom, you moved to modify to the week of the 13th for the final evaluation.
Yes.
We filled in the dates related to the packet, et cetera, and we sort of loosely scheduled, penciled in the 16th as the day of the actual meeting. We'll have to poll for a court for that day. But right now, let's pencil that in. And there was an interest in early in the day. Yes. Okay, and who was the second on the motion? Was that you, Don?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just, um, so we're not going to get this in writing for the dates from the superintendent?
Would you like to?
Well, the contract we just signed, I think we're near obligation to it, states that the, this contract may not be changed except by a writing signed by both parties.
So, my understanding is that it's really, I mean, we're evaluating the former year and in the initial, we did actually request in our initial change of the evaluation date in writing. So, I mean, I would support that. Are you putting forward an amendment to have this in writing?
I can't support this amendment, no. I can support a change in a different manner by which we do it.
Okay.
Understanding, I just saw this document today and the request for the first time, and I think maybe the committee did, I don't know, but I need to comply with the contracts. And, so, and then I'd like to, you know, get the opinion from the attorney who apparently did not advise, take the advice of another attorney. And so we're doing the opposite of what's requested by the employee. I'm having, not in favor of all this hurry up and get this done within 48 hours for this document. If it's in writing, then it's a completely different thing.
Understood.
So, just so I'm clear. If the superintendent wrote, this is what I would suggest for the timeline for evaluation, you'd be fine with it because it's in writing? I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Well, you're hearing that the, there are some legal covers that should be unveiled first and then specific tapes, any resolution or any motion specific to the evaluation should have specific tapes.
Right.
And we're working toward it, but we have, I think there's more to discuss from other people.
So then, wouldn't that push back even further, what we're trying to accomplish? Understand? So then, how does that address your concerns of being out of contract if we're pushing it back even further?
Because we push it back a little further on the time dates. If you violate the contract, it's over for the whole year, so it doesn't matter.
Right.
So it's the end of, end of game. If we modify this now, then I think we, with the attorney for the superintendent and the attorney for the committee getting specific, that's my position. I want to say no more because of the note taking, have the live video and I'm not sure of the ability to defend the position of talking about an employee.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was hearing it properly.
Okay. There's a motion on the table. Would you like to keep your motion?
I would.
Okay. The motion, just to reiterate, is to change the date of the superintendent evaluation to the week of the 13th, which would then be loosely penciled in for the 16th itself. Okay, any additional conversation on this? And you're comfortable with that timeline?
I, I've heard a couple of different things here tonight and in relation to the motion, I would be amenable to working within that motion. I also heard a, some commentary that I would agree with, that maybe we could just come to a quick written agreement and speed this entire process up, which I would be very amenable to. I'll hold them.
Member Ekstrom, would you include in your motion?
A friendly amendment to?
To include a written agreement between both parties?
Of course.
Don, do you accept that as a?
I accept that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Katie, are you still with us?
Yep, I'm here and I'm feeling very happy to see how this is going.
Okay. So let's vote on this motion, all those in favor of extending the superintendent evaluation to the, penciled into the 16th. And also having a written agreement from both parties to support that. All is in favor? Aye. Aye. Mayor Martin says yes.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay. There's no further business today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All right, competition for second. All is in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. We have adjourned.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.